Next year, so that is moving forward. The other issues, Planning Commission and Planning Staff Coordination. One of the issues that came out of the last meeting was how do we work together? How can the staff better assist the Planning Commission in getting information and making good decisions about what to do with land use issues? So there was a workshop on March 25th where we brought in a facilitator and just kind of talked through issues and talked about the efficiency. The things that came out of that was we agreed to have an annual retreat to kind of talk about our work plan. We agreed to talk about training opportunities for the commissioners and just to kind of leave the wavelength of communication open with the ultimate concern about the customer in mind. We are doing a lot of things in terms of improving customer service. You know, we continue to provide handouts that are very accessible to the public, user-friendly, that describe our codes in just plain language. And that's been really successful. We've gotten some good praise on things like that moving forward. The other things that we're doing to improve customer service are moving into kind of the electronic digital age with our permitting systems. Eventually, what we'd like to do is to have people to submit plans electronically to us. First of all, it saves money for them. They're not having to produce seven, eight sets of plans. It saves time because the process right now is they, we would take the plans, make corrections, submit it back. It would take time for the applicants to submit it back to the city. If you do it electronically, that time just decreases significantly. So we're working on that and also working on a more robust GIS system that would help us in the, in just processing the land use issues. Lastly, staff has worked very hard in coordination with the Coastal Commission. On April 9th, there was a meeting because there was an appeal to the city's drainage maintenance program. The Coastal Commission determined that there was no substantial issue. And what that means for us is that we're able to go forward with our maintenance activities in the drainage ditches. We also were able to get through several amendments that were kind of hung up at the Coastal Commission for a number of years. The R1B3 zone standards, the alcohol sales, a lot of those things we're starting to push through and just wade through some of the backlog. And it's essentially going to be very helpful. What the Planning Commission will see on the 13th and what the City Council will see on the 20th are amendments to the R1 development standards that will make it a lot easier for restrictions that apply to those zoning restrictions and residential caseloads. So that's essentially what we've been doing and what we've been working on for, since our last meeting. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dante. So I think would like the Planning Commission to start or Naomi, did you have a comment?
I have a question today.
Go ahead.
So Dante, where is our housing element as far as coastal? Because I thought HCD had already approved that.
Well, we're doing a new housing element now and we're currently just going through that process. So it'll be going to the Planning Commission, you know, the next step. And then we'll have our final for this next period or next term, January.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, would you like to start?
Other commissioners, have any questions?
Yeah.
Just one, so the housing element doesn't go for Coastal Commission approval, correct?
Yes, it does.
It does?
It does go to Coastal Commission approval, yeah. After the fact, though.
Dante, one question, one comment. Is the intent with the more robust GIS system that there will be kind of an open property information lookup where people who may not even need to come in to City Hall be able to find their parcel, get their zoning, their setbacks, all of that basic information right from home? Is that the intent?
That is the intent. And right now, we purchase services through a service provider and we're going to be working direct, there's a couple of different strategies, but we're going to be working directly with the county that's going to update maps for us. But eventually, we'd like for people to be able to access our system at home. We ourselves would like to have that data information. It's just very helpful when you're talking about noticing, making sure that you notice people in a certain radius. Sometimes it gets a little confusing without those systems in place. So that's what we're talking about.
That's maybe, I know a lot of cities and counties in the area have that. Is that a professional perspective or really helpful?
Absolutely.
My second thing is really just a comment and it's about the general plan. And I just hope it's something that you can communicate to the consultant who's preparing that. You know, there are some of us on the General Plan Advisory Committee who have had experience on Planning Commission or council members or other boards, but there is a fair number of people who haven't had any experience on any boards. And the last General Plan Advisory Committee meeting was January 30th. And there was a presentation of a timeline then. And after that, it's really been nothing. You know, we've received a little bit of update on the housing element workshop and a couple of other workshops. But I think for the people who don't have any experience serving on committees and things like that, just a every now and then update from that consultant saying, you know, things got pushed off a little bit, you know, we're kind of shooting for, you know, early May for our next meeting or the end of May, just so people don't go four months without hearing anything for this commitment that they signed up for. Just a thought. Thanks.
Phil, yes, thank you. Dante, I was very, in City Council, I was very pleased that $40,000 was set aside in the budget for the design guidelines, something that I think the Planning Commission members have been looking forward to for quite a while. You mentioned in the report that the work is going to be spread over a period of six to eight months. Can you explain a little bit about what you anticipate the process to, how it's going to take place? And with whom will it be involved?
And we haven't finalized those details. We got quotes. One option would be to work with the end group, who the city currently contracts with for planning services. They have experience in developing design guidelines. And so we anticipate the process of putting it together, doing the community outreach, getting approvals from the Planning Commission, City Council, and then Coastal Commission to take the six to eight months.
Would that process also include, and hopefully I would suggest, strongly suggest that it would include some form of workshop with the Planning Commissioners? Since we've been through this drill for a while and we've been strongly urging that the city adopt these guidelines, it may be worthwhile and productive for the commissioners to be involved in the process in terms of, you know, helping, in terms of suggestions.
We'll make that happen.
Anyone else? Tom, Patrick?
May make it a longer, more drawn-out process. And so it was their recommendation to take those two water courses out. And I think in part, that was probably one of the reasons why they found that the appeal raised no substantial issue.
Okay, then my, I guess my follow-up question to that is, it sounds like that was the right thing to do, but we know that Keough and Pullman are problematic and hopefully there's a different plan that we're working through on a longer track to get those taken care of.
Well, the City Council-
Right direction. So I want to thank all the people involved in that process.
Thank you, and I'll get to you, Marie. I think you said it politely, Les. I think we've learned a lot from all of you and it was sort of like a trip to the woodshed light, our first meetings. And we've got the message, I think, and that's what we were trying to convey to you all that we're hearing you now. We just better make sure we move forward and again, with the professionalism we have on board now that we are moving forward. And that's the way it should work, you know? And there's no excuses, but at least it's a beginning. And I think it's a lot more comfortable to have a Planning Commission and a council that are working as close as legally possible to do. And so I appreciate that too. But I think we got the point here some months ago. And I'll let Councilman Fraser or Vice Mayor and then Councilman Quach.
Yeah, just picking up what Les said. I know we had asked, Council had asked for checklists and there's been some for planning. So maybe we can get an update from Bruce in the next week of what checklists have been developed or under development, which ones that we'll see being coming. So I know that they have been worked on. That was a big priority for us as well.
Councilman Quach? Okay, so I think we all are fairly comfortable, Dante. Thank you and interim City Manager and Tony for getting us to this level here now. And the recommendations are pretty well there. And we are continuing to schedule some updated meetings with, joint meetings with our Planning Commission study sessions. So we'll make sure we don't let those fall by the wayside here in the next few months. And we can continue on. I believe, Alex, you would be up next, and it looks like we have a lot of interested parties for this next item here. At least I get that feeling.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
And if I may interrupt you, Alex, this is Alex's first meeting as a new dad. So congratulations.
Oh, thank you. Nice day with all.
We won't drag the meeting out too late for you because I'm sure you have baby duties as soon as you can get home, right?
I had two hours of sleep last night. But it's kind of, usually I'm the closer of your meetings, but now I guess I'm at the beginning, so it's kind of nice too.
We could have put you at the end just to punish you a little bit, you know?
Spent for a year and a half.
All right.
All right.
Go for it.
And good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. My name's Alex Kodejkin. I'm the deputy city manager. The item before you this evening is a skate park plaza concept layout for you guys. The reason why I chose to bring it here at this joint meeting is because this project would be coming through both of your guys' governing bodies. And with it, I just want to kind of give a little bit of background on the project. And then I'm going to ask Rocky Rayner with the Boys and Girls Club to come up and kind of walk through the conceptual as well for you guys. So I'll just kick it off from here. We don't have to do anything yet, Siobhan. We're good. So with the background, the existing park that is currently out there on Kelly, right at Cunha, is, was built in 1998 and it was through the work of the city, the school district, and the Boys and Girls Club. Naomi and Ed, they were both part of that current skate park that's currently out there. The way it all started and the way the project came to fruition back then was because young people in town needed a dedicated place to skateboard versus skating on Main Street and disrupting business and having safety issues on the sidewalk as well. The city has been responsible since 1998 for the liability insurance of the current skate park and we still are to this day. So the reason why this item is coming before you this evening is back in December of last year, 2013, the Boys and Girls Club and the school district got into an agreement to build a new 24,000 square foot double gym where the current skate park and the tennis courts are located over at Cunha. With that, the Boys and Girls Club came to city staff and asked about relocating the skate park because it is a huge asset for the community and for the youth. One of the, one of the locations that they had in mind and they spoke with Lieutenant Williams at the time was to have the skate park adjacent right here, sandwiched in between the police station and the community center. They wanted to have it next to the police station because the police could still visibly, routinely patrol and go by and just make sure that everything is safe at the site. The Boys and Girls Club has worked with Zach Warmuth, who is a renowned skate park designer, to provide some conceptual for you this evening. The project is about a 6,600 square foot footprint right out there. And there are two different concepts. There is a temporary concept or moving the current apparatuses over to the location or going with a more robust project, which would be handling, creating a concrete skate park at the location. So just some previous actions to date is the city had a brief, the City Council had a brief discussion at the December 17th City Council meeting and Joint Recreation was open to the idea but wanted more details and options to consider before giving staff any type of formal direction about relocating or the idea itself. The main discussion points at the time was what type of facility should, so funding for the project. Back at the March 25th City Council meeting regarding discretionary spending with the surplus, the council went ahead and appropriated or pledged $100,000 for a new skate park facility. The council also, if they move forward and want to choose that as relocation site, would be giving the land as well to build the skate park. In order for the rest of the project to be funded, the Sheriff's Activity League has a pledge estimate of about $150,000. The city has their $100,000. Construction materials and donations and pledges from contractors in the community is at about $75,000. And the remaining cost would be made up between the $125,000 and $250,000 by the Boys and Girls Club through fundraising efforts. So with that, I'd like to give the opportunity for Rocky and then I will come back and I have a couple of other items to follow up with you, just on a couple questions, timelines regarding parking and the trees and the effects of a skate park. But I want you guys to see the conceptual of the project that's being proposed.
Hi, everybody. So what we have on our first slide is basically the concept using a built-in park. But I want to talk about, and that's what we'd really like to do, and there's several reasons for that. Number one, if we build an element park like across the street, number one, it has to be maintained. And we've been very fortunate, and usually an element park only lasts about 10 to 12 years. We've been very, very fortunate because of carpentry here in town and because of the Boys and Girls Club, we've been able to keep that running for about 15 years. It is really not feasible to move those elements over to this park. We'd have to totally rebuild them. And that would be of a cost of well over $100,000. So that estimate of 250 is probably a little low. Also, the element park is noisier and it is not as safe. If you have an element park, that means that these elements are five to seven feet high and there's always a potential of the kids falling off, especially the younger ones, falling that distance. We haven't had that problem at the existing park, but it is always a challenge when you have, when you have elements. So that's why the Boys and Girls Club would prefer to build a concrete park and one that's in ground. So that's why we're pushing the head in that direction. So the park, it's designed for beginner skaters. It is also, has some elements in it to give the more proficient skaters to skate. We also wanted to be a park environment so families could come and sit and enjoy and watch their kids participate in the sport. I also wanted to make sure that you, the boys that are here, Javier and his troupe, also helped with some of the planning of this and they're going to continue to help during the planning all the way through. That's why they're here tonight. They're very excited about the project. They're very excited at the location, it's close to the school, and also because of the teen center. And they're here for this report tonight. Javier is my point man. He keeps the rest of them in line. We also, our plan was not to have a fence because we wanted it open mainly for everybody to use and for it to be able, as long as the teen center was open. We hope that the teen center will stay open until 10, 11 o'clock at night and therefore the kids could go and skate while we have supervision here. But we have to put a fence along the sidewalk and to protect the cars. So that fence will approximately be four feet high. That's to protect people walking along and also to help with the, with not damaging automobiles. There's the concept of the street part of the park where it is more like kids would ride if they were not on our Main Street, riding up and down, jumping off of curbs and going up and downstairs. Here's the next slide. Here's an overview of what it would look like or where it's going to be. That kind of just gives you an idea where the park's going to be. The trees will all be gone. Zach claims, we don't know for sure, that we will recycle the trees. And so that's his plan and that was the plan in the design, by the way. I don't know what recycling trees means. I don't know whether we sell the trees for lumber or we pull them out and we send them to another place else. I'm not sure what that means and Zach's not here to back me up on that. That's just another picture of the existing area now that will be taken down. The blue section is where it's going to be, is, there also is a picture of some elements in there too, I think. At least I tried to send somebody, oh, okay, the cost. The cost of, the general estimate is about $398,000. But we want to be able to use the park where maybe the bikes can go in also. And that will add another $30,000 to $40,000 in reinforcement. If we do that, then the park also will last longer. Theoretically, a concrete park will last forever with very little maintenance, but we know kids will come in with their bikes and come in with other apparatuses. So we're going to reinforce the coping and that's going to add about $30,000 or $40,000 to the project. And I think it's well within reason. So let me kind of give you an idea about the funding. The funding is a little bit different than our plan. We did get the $100,000 from the city and thank you very much. We do have quite a bit in kind from the Andrini family and also from paving, Half Moon Bay paving and grading. We also, there's a new skateboard company moving into Half Moon Bay. I had a meeting with them last week. They're very interested in donating money to this project also, and we're talking about large amount of money. We also have the Tony Hawk Foundation, Tony is here. We're working with them to see if there's any way that we can get some funding from them. And of course, we still have the Sheriff's Department, which I'm meeting with next week. But as far as earmarked at the moment, we have about two-thirds of the money earmarked. And I think the balance of it will be easy to get, I think, with your approval. I know the three people that are waiting, they're waiting for the approval of the council before they sign on dotted line that they're going to give us the money. Okay, do you have any questions?
So I'll just take it real quickly back over to just finishing up the report and then go from the-
I was going to ask, if I may, a question of the speaker.
You're in the mail.
Okay. And it's the kind of question I don't even want to ask, but I think we have to be sensitive enough when we're in these positions that the noise issue with the neighbor-
Yes.
Catholic church and services or memorials or, so I think that's something that I think we have to be, you know, sensitive to. And I don't know how we address that. It looks like we're far enough away, but we would probably need a good solid buffer along there, whether it's trees or hedge or something along that line. It's just that I want to protect us and I want to protect them.
No, I agree. And like I said, there's, by going for $450,000, there's enough money to make barriers or make changes that anybody would want. But I guarantee you that it is a lot quieter for an in-ground skate park. Going to an element skate park, number one, you're up higher, so the noise goes up. But being on concrete and the noise will be down into the ground. So I don't think as far as noise from the actual park is concerned, there may be more noise because the kids having fun. So I think we could put up some kind of a barrier for that if that's necessary. But as far as noise is concerned, it's a lot quieter than what's across the street.
Councilman Quach?
Thank you, Mayor. And to Alex, I will limit my question to the vision, so I don't want to step on your toes. So thank you for the presentation and overview. I really liked the vision of what you're sharing here. I have a question for you about that vision. I'm looking at my screen here of some of the renderings. They're really exciting. I just noticed in those renderings, it's a daylight situation and you mentioned open, a vision of being open at 10 at night. Does your vision include lighting?
Absolutely. That's why the price is 450. Our plan is to put in LED lighting, so therefore it'll be minimal cost as far as operating at all times. And also it just makes it safer because we know the kids are out now after dark in the park that we have. And of course, lighting would be, is top of my list.
That's great, thank you. And you mentioned that some of the noise might be from the fun the kids are having?
Yes.
If we put in some signage perhaps to limit the fun, that makes the noise down.
Oh, I don't think, are you guys standing for them?
Thank you very much.
Councilman Patrick?
I'm questioning you about the lighting. Are you getting the kind of lighting that goes down and there's no overspill?
Yes. I think we call it the Keith Waggel lighting, I think.
It's the softball lighting.
That's it, that's what I'm getting.
Okay. And I do want to vouch for Rocky about the sound on the concrete. It is a lot quieter. I've been to Pleasanton, they have a skateboard park by the softball field. It is a lot quieter than ours. And I've gone to Pacifica, so the sound does stay down because the elements are down lower and they're not above, so that is true.
Thank you. Alex, would you like to continue or any of the, I'm sorry, Phil? Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, I gotta go to the protocol here and then we'll get to you, Mr. Phil.
Thanks, Rocky. And to those of you who are here, the kids who've skateboarded, the only reason why you're getting this is because how great the past 15 years everyone has behaved across the street. That truly is important because everyone was kind of leery putting that in, although we never liked being run down through all the shopping centers. But a big part of this is because of the way you behaved and took care of that park, that people are investing almost a half a million dollars in a new skate park. So you should be very proud of that and tell your brothers and sisters as well. My question is, and I love the concept of a plaza, and people being able to sit outside there. I wonder if this is an opportunity to improve the landscaping. We've always viewed this as kind of a back area. And I know we have some trees and I don't believe any of them are heritage trees, but it might be an opportunity to landscape that where you could have some seating where also the kids are doing their homework in here or they could spill out in there or just, you know, some people walking by can sit out there and enjoy a little more. Because we've got this area really blocked off and there's an opportunity for the big bike rack over there as well.
If you look at the plan, there's $24,000 put aside for landscape. Because we figured we may have to put some fencing up or we may have to put something up against that wall for the church. And also, we're not sure how all this is going to work. And yes, we plan on, because this, you know, the teen center's going to be here. We know the kids are going to be coming in and out of here. We want to have a place where they can sit and be with their friends, talk with their friends, maybe eat and, you know, and skate. We plan on this to be a plaza, a place where they can skate, have fun, and hang out when they're not at the, at the teen center or vice versa. But we have $24,000 in that, for that.
Thank you. Phil, please.
Yes, thank you. In the proposal, it mentions that it's anticipated that nine parking spaces will be removed. Is there any contingency with regard to making up that deficiency?
Yeah, we did. If, can't go back to-
So on that item, that's what I was going to bring up as a topic of discussion because that's a big item here. So just since you're asking.
Okay, Rocky, you can push the mic off up there and then we'll let staff continue on with that question. If we need you, we'll call you back. Is that correct? Thank you.
That was very well staged, by the way.
Perfect timing. So with either of the proposed skate plaza projects, two major items that need to be addressed is, one is parking and there's parking space reductions. Currently, there's- Currently, there's a total of 20 spaces out there, 18 standard and two ADA in that existing north parking lot. With this relocation, there's gonna be 10 standard spaces and one ADA space. So there is gonna be a reduction of approximately nine spaces. One of the things that we looked at, if you remember the senior co-siders, four of those spaces weren't used anyways because there are two big vans were over there all the time. So really, you have a net reduction of five spaces. But with that, there has to be, the questions for council is, do we go ahead and look for a use agreement for overflow parking or do we look for a variance? There has to be a parking study that has to take place as part of it. But ultimately, it's up to the council of what they want to do with the future of parking. With it, in this, in the PowerPoint, I have an overhead view of where currently, so it'll be diagonally, the 11 spaces currently that we have planned. There's currently 39 spaces on the property, so you'd have 30 spaces left. So the questions for council is, one, does the council want to move the skate park first and foremost? I haven't had any formal direction on that, to the north side of the community center. And then, if so, what type of facility would you guys be looking at? And then, the permanent or the apparatuses? And then, third, what would you want to do with the parking? How would you like the direct staff on the parking issue? And then, also on the trees as well, about the net reduction in the total amount of trees. There might actually be some trees that will be saved if you look at the renderings, possibly three of them of those redwoods, but we can't for sure say that they all will be there, so.
Counsel McQualech?
Thank you. And Phil, thank you for your comments. I want to go to item number three first regarding parking. I'm gonna suggest that, and I'd like to know the thoughts, it's kind of nice having the planning commission here, it's very nice. I'd like to suggest we look, take a big picture, look. I did a, an overview, a little overview using Google Earth and seeing what's going on in the area. And I'd like to explore, well, I think we need to come up with a parking solution with whatever we do, because there's a net reduction in spaces. And I'd like to explore and open the idea of looking at the adjacent property where the sheriff vehicles are parked. There is, there seems, obviously, I think everyone's aware I was a little late today. If I was early, I was gonna go behind the DOC and take a look and get a sense for, there's some temporary little buildings there. Why, I can't go back there. But I wanted to see if there's potentially room for parking spaces for the sheriff vehicles. Obviously, there's some spaces where they want to have, we need to go, ready to go type spots. And then also, potentially some space in the back for their other vehicles. And I'd like to at least explore it. It may not be viable, but I think it's worth considering. And that also might bring up the topic of, well, maybe we don't need as a secure area with a fenced in area. And that's something that would come along with that. But I would like to explore that. I'm not, and that's probably my number one choice. Second would be, we'd want to consider some agreement with adjacent properties. And third, go forward with it. That's my position on the parking matter.
Counselman Patrick?
For me, the parking is not as great a concern for me because it's going to be a plaza, which most of the people there are gonna be kids. Yeah, there will be parents dropping them off and that kind of thing. Right now, if you look at that parking over at the skateboard park right now, all they have is like three in front of the skateboard park. And that's on Kelly Avenue. They don't even have designated parking. So I think, what I would suggest is that we leave it that way, see how it works. If it doesn't work, then we can come back and look at another alternative for parking. I just think that, you know, looking at the parking right now without knowing exactly, you know, how it's gonna be handled and how many kids will be there and all that, and a lot of them will be kids here going straight out to the skateboard park. My concern is that I think that we really need to consider going with the sunken skateboard park. As John's indicated, we do have a neighbor that would be concerned about noises during services and all that. And I think having the concrete sunken would really help rather than the elements on top. So I just think that we ought to really focus on those kind of things and then check on the parking after it happens. Because I think we can negotiate parking with the tenants, you know, so.
If I may, just, I think that approach to parking is smarter than, it takes assessing as we move forward, takes a barrier out of the process to moving forward. And I'd like to see this happen. And I also concur with a permanent concrete park.
Yep, so exemption. Number three was reduction in the parking places was number three. Number two, I think we're all in agreement of, well, actually, the first two, we're definitely in agreement of, I think, consensusly that, there's such a word there, that we are willing to move the park because we've stepped up and said we're gonna fund it, part of it. Number two, we are in agreement, I think, without a doubt, of a permanent concrete structure. And number three, the parking issues there under A. And then B, I was gonna ask the city attorney, you know, we are supposed to set the example when it comes time for construction and building and things like that. Are we kind of pushing the envelope by trying to give a little more exemption for our own project with the parking situation? Could we be questioned on that? And again, I'm sorry to bring this up, but I think we have to.
I think the important thing is that you apply the same standards to city proposed development as you do to other private development. If you can make necessary findings for a variance, then you can do that. But the key is to follow our own regulations and apply them even-handedly.
Thank you. I think that's most important for us to all do, without a doubt. And then, when we're talking about neighbors, you know, in our day, it was called the Bell Building, Pacific Bell Building over to the phone. Now it's a communication center and I don't even know who runs it anymore. But there's a parking lot right there. And let me tell you, they don't want anybody in there. So maybe that's an agreement we could work with if they're parking on the weekends, because I don't think they use it on the weekends. I don't ever see vehicles in there. But during farmer's market, they don't want you to park in there because they yell and scream at you. But maybe that's something we could negotiate and work with whoever is the proprietor of that operation or no. I don't have any of their, if anybody does, let us know. It's some kind of communications in there. So that's a possibility. So I think, as the city attorney said, we can work through this variances for parking. I'm pretty sure we can all work towards that. So we're pretty much in agreement, I think, at this time to continue to move forward. Unless, Vice Mayor, do you have any input on that?
Just that there were a good four parking spaces in the back there that have never been used, just with the vehicles that have been stored and the extra waste that was out there, one of the dumpster containers. So we've been down a little bit. And the whole idea is, you know, we want to encourage people to walk, make it pedestrian-friendly to bike over there. And since that is a facility for students and young people or older people who can still skateboard. But, you know, looking at the skateboard park across the street, there was no parking allocated for that skateboard park at all. The parking that there was parking that existed for the school and on Kelly Avenue. So there was no particular parking avenue just for skateboard parks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just a question for staff. Has a determination been made that this building is sufficiently, is a sufficient allocation for parking? Currently, it would probably be under on the parking for this current building, technically speaking with the code. Okay. I just wanted to, curious.
Have you had consideration to utilize the, I think it's a field behind us that's not being utilized at all, maybe considering if whoever owns that to turn that into a parking lot for us to use and negotiate, something like that?
You have to go through Rome first, but we'll let Marina address that. Trust me, my father-in-law for many years has had great vision on that many, many years ago. And it is kind of the archdiocese god thing there you gotta deal with.
And that is the truth. And Councilmember McQualech had brought that up to me. And I know the Boys and Girls Club had explored that in detail, a lot of that property. That is, belongs to San Francisco Archdiocese, as you said, and was part of the original land grant down here. The Catholic Church has retained that property for the last, I guess, several hundred years since they came here and they used to graze their cattle down here. And they are not interested in selling it at all. I believe they were interested in some lease, but it was an exorbitant price. But the Boys and Girls Club did vet that. If you want some particular details, talk to them. But that seemed out of the question more than anything, although we, we were interested in that.
But I think there's other parcels around. And then, again, you know, just visually, there's a container parked over here that needs to be dealt with sometime soon that's taking up parking spaces. And these are things that we can all work through. But I think the main thing is with our study session tonight and with staff's presentation and with the planning commission here and with our, all our young athletic interested friends out there with skateboarding and iPhones. I got you, I got you back there, young man. But why don't we go ahead and I guess we can do a consensus on these three items? Is that correct?
That would be great. And I'd be remiss not to mention that this item was brought forward at the Recreation Committee meeting. And I have two committee members here in the audience. And they fully supported a permanent facility. So I wanted to mention that. But yeah, we can go through and just get a, I kind of have the feel of your guys' consensus just from going around.
And that's what we have to do because it's not a vote.
Yeah, exactly. So I kind of got good enough information and direction.
A wink and a nod.
There you go. So I think we'll be coming back this fall with the formal permit process going forward and we'll work in that direction with the Boys and Girls Club and bring it back. The project timeline is, we're hoping that we could complete the project by May or June of next year, actually. So kind of aggressive, but I think we could, we're already working, it's already in progress. So we'll keep moving forward and then it's about 90 to 120 days worth of construction.
Thank you. Counselman McQualech?
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Alex, if you could, just, I would appreciate, appreciate, I have one comment, but I would appreciate if you would sort of summarize the consensus so we just have it down. And then, but there is, there was an item in the report about maintenance, trash removal, landscape maintenance, et cetera.
So I can touch upon that.
Moving forward, so there would be a change or potentially a change, I want to discuss that.
Okay. So regarding maintenance, currently, back in 1998, I believe, the city was on the hook for maintenance at the time for the current skate park facility. We haven't been living up to that part of the agreement. We currently just handle the liability. But moving forward, we have a recommendation for the city to go ahead and handle the landscape maintenance along with any trash removal. With a concrete facility, it'll just make it a lot easier because you won't have the wear and tear on the ramps as much. There might be some concrete items, but according to Zack, they can last a very long time. So the city would be on the line for the maintenance and the liability for the facility.
So as a potential follow-up item for Rocky and his young protege, I'd like you to think about a potential role for the kids in the upkeep of the park. I think that might show a, illustrate their ownership of the space and the plaza they're using and with the effort to keep it clean and do, oh, it's the end of the day, let's pick up, whatever it is. But I would think about that and, you know, going forward, we can do something or not, but...
I think because the Boys and Girls Club will be in here from now on. You want me to get up there? That's bad. Anyways, I think since the Boys and Girls Club's here and we know about Caitlin and that life's cracked with it, I think she will fit and, we should play. Yeah. Anyway, I'm sorry. Judith's telling me to do that over there. Yeah, we cleaned it up there once in a while. So I'm sure, especially since we're here all the time.
Great, perfect. Thank you. And Alex, that's sort of the direction I'd like to keep going with.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex. You know, well, part of the, oh, I'm sorry, Phil, please.
Quick question is, does maintenance include repair costs? And if not, who's responsible for the repairs?
So if you were talking about maintenance and repair, it would most likely be the city if you said maintenance.
Well, it says maintenance, but I would...
But that would include the repair. If there was like cracked, you know, edges or something like that, it would probably be at the cost of the city.
Thank you. Would Representative of the Hawke Family Foundation like to say a couple of words, please? Welcome to our community. I was looking forward to you to skating over there.
I'm sorry. Do I do some... Pushing out a step. There it is. That's my brother who skates, not me. So first of all, I want to say that it's a huge step just that you guys are doing this and pushing forward with it. I'm on the board of directors of the Tony Hawk Foundation, which has given away about $5 million to build over 500 skate parks around the country. All in, those parks cost about $100 billion. And often, those parks get built after a lot of battles between kids and their parents and the cities who don't want to do it. So you've taken a huge step here. And the one thing I would encourage is to get more kids involved, work is involved early in reviewing the design, feeling like they own it, fundraising, car washes, all that kind of stuff. Because the more work they put into it in advance, the more they're gonna take ownership of it once it's built. And that's proven time and time again. The other thing I think that's gonna be surprising to you is there's a chance it will be the most, certainly one of the most used recreational facilities in the city, if you do it right. I don't know if you've seen that little ramp in El Granada that's right on the Coast Highway? There are, there's kids on that all day long, every day. And that was a completely volunteer effort, you know, kind of a guerrilla effort, if you will. No one knows for sure who has control over it, really. But, you know, it's there and it's used. So I think you're doing a great thing. It's a great step forward. The other thing I would encourage is, I have to say, so I talked to, I talked to my brother about this park yesterday, I showed him the design. I talked to the executive director of the foundation. And there's a little bit of a wincing that goes on by the people who have built a lot of skate parks when they find out it's right next door to a police station. Because that kind of sends a message to kids that we have to watch over you because you're skateboarders. And as you can imagine, my brother who's had a pretty successful career as a skateboarder, that's just the stuff he doesn't like to hear. He's seen a lot of kids really find themselves as athletes through skateboarding. And I think the basic assumption that they're hooligans or ruffians or need to be watched over. I'm hoping you'll find out that that's just not true. And you'll see kids coming, not just from this community, but from all around. You know, the Pacific Escape Park gets kids from all over. But the fact that you're gonna build it at all, no matter where it is, police department or no, is just a great thing, so. And we'll be involved as much as you guys want. The staff of the foundation is very experienced in helping walking cities through this process to make sure they build the best, most inclusive skate park they can. And just the fact that I live in El Granada, I think, and I was the founding executive director of that foundation, so I know I can kind of force those guys to get involved here. Anyway, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your recommendations and thank you for sharing the foundation with all of us here on the coast side. And I think you could go back and share with the foundation and your brother, the family, about this location was probably the most ideal we had.
I understand that.
You understand that. Number one. Number two is, I think we have a great record with the skate parkers with not having an issue with our former police department and now with our sheriff's deputies. I think it's a, it's a good group working together and I think that they're stepping up and putting some money into it also. And so I think that's very important to share with the foundation. So I thank you very much and we're gonna get close here to be moving on to our next meeting. So thank you all very much. And Alex, any further information? Counsel McQualech?
I'm sorry, just one thing. I'd like to, if I may, Mayor, I'd like to ask the, I think you're counsel, I'd like to ask all the kids that contributed just to stand up, if you would be so kind as to indulge me.
Come on, guys.
Stand up and be...
Stand up and be acknowledged. I want you guys to know that most kids are not here tonight, most kids in the community are not trying to build a new skate park. That's a really good thing you're doing, and we really appreciate it, and I like the partnership we have going on, so I want to say thank you.
And you finish skating, and someday you can run for city council and get up here and try to make right decisions, become great leaders in the community, so good luck. So planning commission members, thank you guys again for all your work, and as I said, you really are the heart and soul of moving things forward in the city, so good start, staff, good job, and we will move on to the regular city council meeting. Redo the deck chairs here on the, not the Titanic. Five-minute break. Try again. Good evening, and welcome to our Tuesday, May 6, 2014 meeting. Before we start the meeting and have roll call, I'd like the council to say a few words on this very unfortunate tragedy we all had here Sunday. So before we start the pledge of allegiance, Councilman Kowalczek, would you like to say a few words about our loss to the community of Andrini and their family? We'll all try, it's a tough one. No, I'd like to just start the meeting in his memory and his honor, and with our pledge of allegiance. I think it's appropriate that we do it now. It's up to you if you want to do it later, but I thought.
I can try.
Yeah, I know, go, just a few quick comments.
I can't even begin to summarize the contributions of the Andrini family to our community, and those in particular of Eddie Senior, and the tragedy of his passing this last weekend, in such a tragic and public and horrific way. And I just, I pray for his family, I pray for him, and I'll try and just share one thing, that occasionally Eddie Andrini would invite me for a tune-up, as he'd call it, and that was his indication to me to visit him so he could make sure I knew his perspective on things. And I won't be able to have any more tune-ups per se, but I certainly will keep him in my memories. And as I help govern this community, I will reflect upon what he means to this community, and to the extent I can carry forward his energy and passion and commitment, I will try to do so.
Thank you, Rick. Councilman Patridge, are you able to say a few words at this time, or you want? Now I'll let you.
Well, I've known Eddie for a long, long time, and his whole family. I guess, I used to have breakfast at Moonside Bakery, and once a week I would have my little breakfast with Eddie, and he would always give me heck. So Ricky, you weren't the only one. That was the way he cared about the community, and that's how he shared his love for the community. He wanted to make sure what we were doing was right, and that it didn't matter how we felt, it was how he felt, and how he wanted things to go. But I think the greatest thing that just happened recently was when we did Main Street paving, and Eddie was in charge, and he went to all the merchants and explained to them exactly what was going to happen, how it was going to happen, and when it was going to happen. So he really was a spokesman for the city when he did that paving job. And we were so grateful, because he did not mess up any of the timelines, and he made sure he was on and off of there when he told the merchants he was going to be on and off. And so I think that's the way Eddie did everything. He was well organized, and he thought through things, and he, you know, he really cared about this community. He had a strong voice, he was opinionated, but I respected that man. We may not have always agreed, but you know what? We remained friends all these years, and I cherish that.
Vice Mayor.
Well, it can be a real testament when you find an entire community is just so shocked and saddened, and that just shows the depth and breadth of Eddie's involvement in the community. And there's so many things that people have no idea what he's done through the years, helping out and helping people. It truly is one of those great American success stories, where, you know, a local boy, a farm boy, worked for his father after school, became a man who created a major business in this community, employed so many, and then became world-renowned because of his hobbies and his interests. And as Rick and Naomi, and I'm sure John will say, you know, we've all had an earful from him, from now and then. And you know, he talked about how things were done much simpler, much quicker, and much less costly in the past, and he's right. We would live in a different time. But the true legacy, I think, is his family, and how giving he was, and the whole Andrini family, Mario, and Eddie Junior, and Sandy, and of course Linda. You think of all the community fundraisers they participated in. So it's more than just a man who flew planes, and I think that's where everyone is going to miss, but you have to say Eddie lived his life and loved his life and loved his family, and that's, if you can do that in your life, then you are truly blessed, and we were blessed to have him be a part of our community and have a friendship with him.
Thank you, and I think all of you in all of the city is standing by to do whatever it can to help him continue to move forward with this unfortunate situation, and I know the love is out there with everyone. He really was taken from us, but he was the go-to. He was half moon bay. He didn't have to be governor or mayor or whatever. He was the man we could go to, and it didn't matter who you were, he'd take care of you. And let me tell you, they were working on our pipe recently, and he would be in the ditch with a shovel, and then be flying World Airshow somewhere. So God bless him and their family, and we will all stand by, and I think when we have our roll call and pledge of allegiance, this meeting is dedicated to Eddie Andrini. Thank you. Roll call, please. This is very unusual for all of us, but we have to do it.
Here.
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 Here, and I'm sure Councilmember. Here, and I'm sure Councilmember Alafano would be right alongside of us here saying the same thing. He is out of the country, otherwise he did send a message to me and condolences to all the Andrini families. So, a little extra pledge of allegiance tonight.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we do know there'll be more tears for the week ahead, trust me. And it's okay, it's all part of our life. So, at this time, we have the mayor's announcements and I will just briefly go through them as best as possible. The first one is Coastside Land Trust and their representative was here a minute ago. She still is, Josie. They're having a session this weekend and when you're up, you could kind of catch me up on a little bit too and we could learn about the species and the beautiful birds that fly in our skies. That's going to be on May 10th. May 15th, also another dear friend will be in here, she'll speak about this in a minute, but our youth summit is coming up for all of our wonderful youth and all of our participating groups that are helping put this together. And May 17th is Rock the Block, Rock the Block is coming up before we know it and May has gone by. And I think we have to mention that this Sunday is Mother's Day too, so don't forget, Mr. Alex, that Mom's Day is here. It's your first one, so if any other council members have announcements, you're more than welcome to make them. Otherwise, we will continue moving on. And so, at this time, city attorney, I don't believe we've had any closed session, but you might mention how the agenda is set up this evening a little bit.
We will have a closed session after the regular open portion of the meeting to discuss the city manager position.
Thank you, city council reports. Councilmember Patridge, please.
Okay, first I served on the interview panel with Vice Chair David Canepa to select six people to serve on the Transportation Authority Citizens Advisory Committee. Then, of course, we also attended the special meeting on the bridge and attended the Council of Cities in Half Moon Bay. And it was an interesting panel. It was about the update of returning and releasing the prisoners in our county. And after listening to everybody, it's like San Mateo County is ahead of the curve in handling the situation with these people. And I'm proud to say that, they really are doing a great job. And to hear what they're doing with the prisoners and educating them and giving them the services that they need was really kind of inspiring about what they're doing. Attended the congestion management environmental quality committee report, meeting rather, and then we approved the Transportation Authority Shuttle Program for the 2014-15 and 2015-16 fiscal years. And we approved the allocation of the remaining funds from the $4 vehicle registration fee to the countywide congestion management. And the city will be happy to hear this, we will be getting some extra money for stormwater pollution prevention program. So, that will really help all of us in the county. We recommended approval of $1,390,000 to the priority development areas in Belmont, Millbrae and Redwood City. And that will go to CCAG and they will either approve it or disapprove what we've recommending. We also approved and recommended approval of the updated San Mateo County Priority Development Area Investment and Growth Strategy. Last meeting, I remember I told you about the feasibility of the express lanes. Well, we are going to go ahead and we did the study parameters for the feasibility analyst. And so, we are going to be looking at express lanes on US Highway 101 on the south end. Yeah, so that will help maybe some of the congestion, we don't know yet. I think the one thing that came out of that congestion management is I've always been saying that I would really like to have a priority development area in Half Moon Bay because you get more money, funding availability. And so, I don't know how many of you remember when we had redevelopment and we had downtown area as the redevelopment area and we said that we would try and develop downtown more so than outline because all the infrastructure is here. And we also increased the density for, you know, multifamily, all those kind of things and gave priority on Measure A funds for that. So, I think we need to look at that and then try and see if we can get that approved as a priority development area to help bring more money into the city. So, I think that's something maybe, John, maybe we can talk about and look at in doing that. Because right now, most of the funding is going to the priority development areas regardless of its housing, transportation, streets, whatever. They are getting the most majority of the money. So, we need to find an area that we can do that with. Attended the San Mateo County Transportation Authority meeting. We reaffirmed our investment policy and reauthorized to invest monies with the local agency investment fund. We set June 5th for the public hearing on our fiscal year 2015 budget. We authorized $750,000 for the grade separation on Ravenswood Avenue in Milla Park. Milla Park is the first time that they've ever applied for any money. So, it's kind of nice to see that the other cities are becoming involved. May 10th will be the official ribbon cutting ceremony for San Bruno grade separation. If you want to see a tremendously beautiful project that was done by the TA and other people, it is absolutely fabulous. Was that that worst intersection of San Bruno when you went? That has all been, it's just really magnificent. So, if you get a chance, you need to look at it. We approved $5,711,414 for Measure A funds for the shuttle projects and programming. And Vice Chair Dave Canepa and myself presented the candidates to be appointed to the TA Citizens Advisory Committee and they were all accepted and approved. Attended the YMCA Heroes Breakfast along with Alex and it was really fun to go to see the different groups being recognized. And South Coast from Pescadero was honored along with four other organizations. So, it was quite a breakfast, it was really, really nice.
Councilman Qualcheck.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things, I attended the Council of Cities Dinner, an event that was hosted in Half Moon Bay. For those who may not be aware, that is an event where we meet with the other elected officials from San Mateo County and understand the issues and concerns in their communities and the things they're doing that we can learn from. And we talked about the jail population and how that's being handled. And I completely agree and I'll look forward to our lieutenant, as I say, it really feels and not just feels, it is clear that San Mateo County is ahead of the curve. And I like that and I really appreciate all of the folks that work hard to make that happen. I attended the special bridge meeting where we made the decision to conduct testing of the existing Main Street Bridge and factor that into our decision process going forward. Also participated in the Sewer Authority Midcoast Meeting where we welcomed our new Sewer Authority Midcoast General Manager, Rob Hopkins. I will invite Rob to come introduce himself at a subsequent city council meeting. Also, at that meeting, we approved for distribution and review the SAM budgets and there are three separate and distinct budgets that will be coming before us for the council to review and approve. And that goes out to all the sewer, all the member agencies. And I can't believe you didn't mention this, Naomi, that I also attended the special joint meeting of the city council and the planning commission where we gave direction to staff to develop a new permanent skate park adjacent to the Ted Akak Center. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, please.
I attended the Office of Emergency Services, JPA, meeting and it is now going to be broadcast on Penn TV. We've met in the past down in the jury room of the county. So, we've been upgraded to the supervisors' chambers and we're broadcast live and then also rebroadcast as well. The main issue that was coming back is we're renewing the JPA agreement. The budget has remained flat, but it'll be coming back to the cities. There was some key language that through the drafts back and forth that the state required in that for emergencies and there's also opportunity for any changes, but that was the main part of that. I also attended a conference on electric charging stations for communities and municipalities at SAP over in Palo Alto and had a great opportunity speaking with Santa Clara, San Jose and different cities that have installed charging systems and their thoughts about them, but really also found out a lot about the different levels of charging. And I can share that information with staff and I know we have staff that has been working on that. So, I think that's going to be coming back to us soon. And there was some key people that are willing to come to Half Moon Bay and talk to us more about that and availability. There's also opportunities for revenue streams. But I had to tell the guy that had the solar powering charger and stations that that wasn't going to work out too well for us since we tried that with our pay station at the parking lot at Pafler Beach. Also was at the Peninsula Congestion Traffic Relief Alliance and we talked about the upcoming Bike to Work Day, which happens to be this Thursday. And the Coastside will have an energy station out in El Granada by Alhambra where they have in the past. And just along that subject, maybe the interim city manager can make some comments during his report. Because of the usage of our bike trails now, people go to work using those, students use them to access schools. I have been getting feedback from the community on the ramp that was broken over in Miramar of the bridge over there that the state is working on. And people want to know what can be done to, what involvement they can do, who can they call to help go this along? Obviously, there's going to be levels of permitting that take X amount of times. And, you know, if it's a money holdup through the state, you know, maybe we can float that money to them till they get it back. But that's really become an inconvenience and it's not just for our tourists. It's for the people who live here, who do use it to go to work or students going to school and people for their recreation, so that has had an impact on there. And also, just the library outreach that we've been doing has just been fabulous. Friends of the library have been great and our architect and their group have been really wonderful. We've gone out to, throughout the community, to different storefronts, thanks to Brazelberry, thanks to the Mercado over at the New Leaf Shopping Center. And the library itself has held open houses. We have over 700 responses from the community just from that, you know, everywhere from kids to seniors. And we, I want to thank Aaron Torre at the farmer's market for giving us the opening season spot, but a great spot too. And now that we're in a phase two of this, we've got more relevant pictures and things for the community. So, it was great, they had the pictures for the youth rooms down at the bottom. So, we had kids putting on dots on areas that they liked. And we also had comments from people on the exterior that they would like to see, also streetscape, landscaping. So, what I've been really happy about last year is, and the difference between last year and this year, is last year when we had the kiosk out just starting to get some outreach, people had said, "Really, are you really going to do it this time? Didn't we talk to you years ago?" And it was like, yeah, and that's all I kept hearing over and over. So, to be at this point now and didn't hear that this time. It was, people were, "Oh, this is great," they were happy to be involved. And I did hear people, "Let us know when you start your fundraising for it too." So, it's, I know this is happening, the community is starting to embrace this, but getting input is doing really well. And we do have another library community meeting on Thursday night at 7 o'clock here. At the library, 7 o'clock, here at the library, 7 o'clock Thursday night, come join us. So, yeah, thanks.
Like you could see, the city council gets out and about and does some things. So, first things, the study session we had regarding our Main Street Bridge, we were required by our environmental studies, SEQA and others, that we have consensusally agreed that we will be doing testing on the bridge. And I'm sure our city staff will mention a little bit about that and where we are and where we're going with that. And while we're talking about the Main Street Bridge, there's a lot of misinformation that gets put out there regarding different issues. And I had the opportunity to visit with the mayor of Heelsburg, who has a bridge issue too. And so, she and I will be getting together again soon. And very similar situation and they're seven years into their project right now, seven years. And it is a steel bridge, it is not totally concrete. So, but I think we're moving forward with that and we're trying to listen and do the best we can to represent this community. Also, we have to admit that I did get up at 5:30 in the morning and Lieutenant Muncy arranged for me to have a sergeant pick me up and go out during this triathlon, which was a great learning experience. At 6:30 in the morning, we're at the harbor, there was a fog issue and I think our interim city manager is going to be talking about this also. The people there were just so enthused, it was just amazing. And there was hundreds of people. And unfortunately, the fog delayed the process a little bit along the way there, a lot actually. And then the event went off and unfortunately, it did cause some pretty major delays for our residents. And it was, it was a situation that, as I said, will never happen again as long as I'm here and I think the rest of us and staff. And along that line, we put together a follow-up staff meeting with Lieutenant Muncy, Sergeant Sheridan, battalion chief from Cal Fire and our staff, Stuart and Dante and myself and then a representative from AMR, the emergency response people. And so, we had a very good, and Ryan Quillo, the event planner also was there and organizer. And we learned a lot about this situation. And one of the things I learned, I believe there's a huge bicycle ride coming through again here very soon and they're coming through all the time, but a bicycle ride does not need a permit as does a bicycle race. Is that correct, Stuart? You might be able to follow up with me when you do your report on that. But I think we as a city, and you will report on our next steps on what we're going to do to address this situation. But I want you to know that we were very concerned about it and we didn't meet with that. Again, with Councilman Qualcheck and with Councilman Alafano out of town, Councilman Patridge had a special day in his life. And so, I was third string and went over and Councilman Qualcheck guided me through the SAM board. And maybe it was because I was there, but it was one of the shorter meetings I think ever, which was great. And, but I learned a lot and we will be hearing about the budget process coming very soon. Council of Cities was excellent, again with probation and all the agencies involved there, the law enforcement agencies and Marina set it up at SAM's chowder house for the Council of Cities. That's right, Siobhan and our staff. And boy, let me tell you, all our council members and mayors from throughout the county here were very happy to come to the coast and it was a beautiful day. But extra special was Councilman Alafano was re-elected to the LAFCO board, which was a very good opportunity for him to continue on and for us, for him to be elected on the first ballot. And I did a ribbon cutting at Via Uno. Unfortunately, I was in my work clothes, but I still had to do it. But the only one that criticized me is my wife on that one, but you know, we have to work. And I'd like to thank our Public Works people and our staff for hanging the beautiful flower baskets on Main Street and painting the poles. The poles look wonderful, they're clean and I think that's very important for us to have this beautiful Main Street going there and it just shows how energized everyone is doing that. And I believe here in the future, we're going to be looking at a little staff get-together again too someday here soon. So, I think we've done quite a bit there. If I missed something, let me know, but we will continue on here with... But we will continue on here with, our next item on the agenda will be organizational excellence, our Neighborhood Watch program, and I'm not sure who's handling that. Oh, Lieutenant Muncy, I'm sorry. I thought you were here for the money.
Mayor, Council, thanks for the opportunity to profile the Neighborhood Watch program that the sheriff's office has assisted on.
Lieutenant, I'll get you to pull that mic a little bit closer so we want to make sure everyone hears how important this is.
I speak a little softly, I'm sorry. Carry a big stick, though, going to show you. Just to go over some of the goals, objectives, and outcomes of the program. First, obviously, the number one goal is to reduce crime. And by doing that, we improve the quality of life in the neighborhoods. But we really give the citizens the tools to make their own neighborhood safer and bring the community closer together. Currently, we're very proud to say that we have four neighborhoods participating with approximately 200 of your community members participating as well. The first group I want to talk about was the Filbert Avenue group. They've been very active. Currently have signs at Filbert Avenue and Railroad, First Avenue and Filbert, and the mid-200 block of Filbert. The next group is the Frenchman's Creek group. Again, a very active group. They're also really involved with CERT and they're kind of combining both Neighborhood Watch and CERT to work out of Frenchman's Creek. Currently, we have signs up at the entrance to Frenchman's Creek, 2001 Burdell Lane, 2020 Twillane Lane, and 632 Russell Frances Avenue. And the next one. The Keigho group is probably our most active group with the most members. And they're just doing a fabulous job. They're led by Jim Wedley, who's very active. We currently have signs there at Pillar Cedos Avenue and Wave Avenue, Pillar Cedos Avenue and Keigho Avenue, and Wave Avenue and Cabrillo Highway, and Lauren Lane and Keigho Avenue. Lastly would be our Leslie Gardens group, with signs at Main Street and Popular Street into the entrance into the parking lot, 701 Arnold Way in the entrance into the parking lot, and Arnold Way at Colonel Way. And lastly, just what's next? We're going to be working with the different groups to assist them in putting on their own national night out. It should be coming up, I think, the 5th of August, but it'll definitely be in August. It should be a really good, really good group. Alex and I just received an email from one of the groups. They kind of wanted to jump ahead of August and try to put something out earlier where they were going to do a whole block party to bring awareness to crime prevention. We'll see if they want to do that, if they just want to hold off to National Night Out because that's what we're looking to support. And as long as I had the floor, I did want to give a big thanks to Deputy Sean Chase, who really worked hard on this, is one of our community policing deputies and started the organization. But since it took off, really with law enforcement, we're a resource forum. We've kind of pulled back and let them have their own leadership and go forward. And they kind of addressed the different issues that are in the different neighborhoods because not all of them are the same. And I think we're really proud that within a year, we've gotten these four groups started and going.
Very good. Thank you, and thanks for all your officers that are helping you. And thanks to all our neighbors and friends that are stepping up for this Neighborhood Watch partly, because we're all part of trying to ensure that everyone is safe in the neighborhoods as possible. I think we have a safe community, and I believe Lieutenant and I were talking that there was, you know, they get a lot of calls, but a lot of calls are for accidents and medical. And fortunately, our crime rate is staying low, and we want to keep it that way. And so we thank you for that. And next item on the agenda will be our interim city manager. Stuart, please.
There are three items that I'd like to talk about tonight. One is the bridge on the trail that you mentioned. We are in contact with the state about what their next processes are, and they are still muddling through the state-level stuff. I talked to Dante today. He had talked to a couple of people who are involved in it. And what Dante and I are thinking is maybe to bring somebody from the state down to try and explain to the community what their process is. Because this is a big issue for us, and it doesn't seem as if they are able to work their way through their system. So it might be good for them to explain what their system is and figure out where we can help them in their process. So I'll talk to Dante about seeing if we can arrange that. For the testing on the bridge, the council gave us the direction to move forward with that and to bring the scoping document to the council. We have that planned for May 20th. So we'll bring back the scoping document to the council. That way, not only can the council, but if the community wants to provide input at that time, we can take community input and work through our experts and figure out what the best scope of work is for that. And the third one is on the triathlon. And the mayor stole most of my thunder on all of that, and I appreciate that. It makes my job easier.
No, you repeat it probably more clear.
No, I'm sure I wouldn't. But we did have, you know, we did have a triathlon come through the town. And triathlons are different than, as you said, than rides. Rides go with the flow of traffic, and therefore, when they're coming down on Highway One, they're not asking the sheriff's department to prevent traffic from crossing their paths. Also, when they do a ride, they're supposed to follow all the laws of the road. Whereas when you do a triathlon and a race, there are times where they need to, you know, since they're trying to get their best time possible. And this race is a sanctioned race for other types of events, so therefore, the time is very important. The mayor is right that there was a fog delay, which delayed the time when people got into the water. It made their swim a little bit harder than you would normally have expected. So there was a delay in when people got out of the water and on their bikes and through to the Johnston House. We did meet with the, all the different groups, as the mayor said. And, you know, one of the issues that came up was just making sure that we have the best permitting process possible. The person who's in charge, the organizer of the event, suggested that we look at a couple of other places. And I think one of the things that we, and we need to come back to council at some future point with their permitting process, but I think one of the things, one of the ideas that I have, and I've talked to staff a little bit about it, is that, you know, if we're going to have an event that crosses Highway One, that we bring it to the city council for approval. And also, if we're going to have events that are going to be large events in community facilities, such as the Johnston House or any of the parks, that the city council become aware of that and do an approval. So we're going to look through to see what other cities are doing on large events, on what they do with triathlons, how they notify the community, and all those things. And we'll bring back a package to the city council at a future date to make the permit process better. You know, this is one of those examples where, you know, it did not work as well as we had imagined in our minds when this was going forward. We thought doing the soft closure on Highway One was going to allow enough traffic to go through, but it was a different kind of process than what we've faced when we do rides through town. And I apologize for the inconveniences it caused for people. And that's, you know, I, my heart does go out because I understand how important of a day Easter is. We will not let that happen again. But also, it's a learning experience, and I appreciate all the comments I've gotten from the public on this to let us know how important it is. And, you know, a number of them had given us different ideas on what we could do differently going forward. And I take that, you know, to heart.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment on that? I think one of the key things is we need to make sure that if they are going to come back and do this, they need to stay on the west side of Highway One. They should not be crossing Highway One at all. Because I don't care if you let them cross one or two spots, that's going to stop everything because it's a timed race. And it's really important, if they want to come back here, and I'm going to stand whole firm on this, that they need to stay on the west side and go on the Coastal Trail or something where it's not impeding anybody. Because I think, you know, these bike races we have come through, they abide by the rules of the highway. They're not telling us to stop any kind of traffic for them and stuff. And I really feel sorry for those people. I mean, I got stopped by the officer when I was going to cross, but I saw a bike coming. So every time that happened, no matter where you were, you were stopped. So I just think, you know, having them come to city council, I don't think it's as necessary as crossing Highway One, just to let them cross Highway One.
I mean, that was a conversation we had with the organizer, that they would not be doing that again in the future. They do want to come back to Half Moon Bay. They found that it was a nice area. They are thinking, maybe trying to do more of their route within the harbor itself. And I'm kind of curious how that works for them, because I don't know if it's big enough to be able to do a bike race and a run. But we did talk about not crossing Highway One. We also, you know, talked about, you know, making sure it doesn't fall on an Easter Sunday as well. You know, their rule, you know, they like to have theirs on the third Sunday of April. And, you know, they told me that it won't happen again until 2025 that it happens on Easter. So we'll have it in our notes that on that Sunday, if they're still in town, they will not be doing it on the third Sunday in April. So there are a number of things that we learned, and, yeah, crossing Highway One does not work for a race.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
And not only crossing, it was the intersections. I had gone out there earlier in the morning, too. And that really, as much as south of town, crossing Johnson House, was the intersections along each way. Because you ended up, there was at El Granada, not so bad. Frenchman's Creek, again, not so bad for the people coming out. But once you got to Strawflower, you've got that entire intersection. So everyone from all angles was held up. Once again, at Kelly Avenue, oh, excuse me, on both ends of Strawflower Shopping Center, you've got all those entryways. Everybody was stopped because they trickled along, unlike when we've had the MGEN Tour of California. You've got those elite athletes and they're in the, not a pentathlon, but they're in that peloton. They're in that peloton, they push right through. We had rolling stops. So you've got Strawflower, both entrances, and then again at Kelly, you've got every intersection stopped. So it wasn't just, it couldn't be that, yes, they're just riding along the highway because you're stopping. So clearly, if they're going to raise Coastside Trail, you can go unimpeded for a long way.
Thank you. Councilman Qualcheck?
Thank you. I have two comments. One, I want to thank the community members who called and emailed with their concerns. I had a similar issue in that I place a premium on my family time. And I spent my Easter service, church service, on Highway One, and so wasn't able to participate in that. And that was most often what I heard from other members of our community is interrupted their family time, interrupted their religious worship. And so I take that seriously, and it affects me personally. And I very much appreciate the summary that the mayor and the interim city manager provided. Yeah, I don't, I think, and that's the first point. Second point is, I absolutely want this event to come back, and I don't, and I don't want us to make the same mistakes again, and we won't. So I would agree, no crossing of Highway One unless there's some sort of structure created for the event that allows them to do so.
A big old bridge.
A big, a big old bridge. Anyway, if there's some solution, I'm open to solutions, but the idea is, I would love that event to be here. I would love that event to not disrupt our flow of traffic. Because, you know, I was down at the starting point of the Half Moon Bay International Marathon last year, and the energy is amazing, the athletes and the casual athletes and the serious athletes. It's really amazing. And I'm sure it was the same with the triathletes. And I welcome them to be in our community, and we'll do a better job next time. The final point on this is signage leading up to the event. That was the other point I heard a lot from the community, that they want to be informed in a more visible vocal way. And whether that's, you know, we, of course, announced it, but I think there should be some expectations for communicating it through our local paper and even a sign, you know, flashing sign on the highway, kind of a thing. But those are my comments, and I trust we'll handle this better next time. Thank you.
Yeah. And I think in conclusion, there, we talked about communication, communication. And then even talked with all the county and highway patrol agencies, there's a lot of learning going on with all events, because everyone wants to have an event. There's a lot of events in San Mateo County, as Lieutenant Muncy can tell you. And they all want to come to the coast. I think there's a big one coming to Piscadero soon and things like that. So we all need to work together, and we all are learning every time there's an event put together. So this time, I'll move on to public forum and thank you all for your patience. So my first card will be our visitor from San Mateo County is Assistant Controller Juan Regoso, please.
Well, I'd like to thank the city council for the opportunity to speak today about the upcoming election in June. My name is Juan Regoso. I'm the current Assistant Controller for San Mateo County. I've been working in the office for the past 13 years, and I am running for County Controller. So what does the County Controller do? Well, the County Controller serves as the Chief Financial Officer for the county. We maintain the books for the county and we produce the financial reports for the county. We also process all payments, so we essentially pay the bills. We, while the tax collector sends out the bills and collects the property taxes, we are responsible for distributing the property taxes to the schools, special districts, the county. And we also, we also have an internal audit shop, which the purpose of it is to ensure that county operations are run efficiently with strong internal controls. As your next County Controller, I would continue to ensure that we protect your taxpayer dollars, that we reduce costs by performing operational audits to ensure that all county departments, county programs do their operations in an efficient and effective manner. And also, we'd like to continue to improve financial transparency. To this end, we recently launched the Open Checkbook, which allows anybody to go online and look up information about any payment issued by the county in excess of $5,000. It's, we're one of the first government entities to do this in the country, so you should go check it out. And lastly, I would just, would like to ask everyone to please vote. The election's coming in June 3rd, and to, more specifically, to vote for me as our next County Controller. Thank you.
Thank you for coming over, and I wish you well. Next one would be Shazarad.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm here to invite you to the youth summit, answer any questions you might have. I just want to thank the city for supporting this event. This will be our third year doing it, and Lieutenant Muncy has done great stepping into the leadership role and facilitating it. We're going to have it on May 15th at Cunha. And this year, the school district has partnered really well with us, and we get the whole eighth graders, sixth and seventh period, and we'll have presentations for them, and then we'll open it up for the public for three to five to come lines. Again, we'll come and do the barbecue. We have great presentations by the sheriff's office, by the FBI, and our friend, Don O'Keeffe, Marshall O'Keeffe, is sending over some resources from the marshal's office to participate, too. And of course, you guys will be our guest of honors and the school district, and this school district board members. And Congresswoman Spear has also said that she'll be making a stop to say hello. So again, thank you for your support. And if you have any questions, you can ask Lieutenant Muncy or myself. We'd be happy to have you. And we have, we actually are putting all of you to work, so hopefully, you're able to attend.
Thank you. We're looking forward to it very much, and we know that you've reorganized enough to ensure that we get all those young boys and girls there to preach to them, and we can tell them you've got a good chance here. Very good. So this one will be, next will be Joe Chamberlain, please, from the Coastside Land Trust.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I originally had three items to speak with you about, but the mayor added a fourth, so I'll try to be quick. And that was, thank you for bringing up the songbird event this coming Saturday at the senior center. World-famous Alvaro Harameo, who many of you probably know, is going to be teaching us how to identify songbirds and sea birds here on the coast from 1:00 until 2:30. And it's our first opportunity to be in the new senior center, which is gorgeous. So it's a lovely facility. I hope to see you there. The second item to speak about is, we're working with the San Mateo County Pollution Prevention Team, who is sponsoring, who are sponsoring the National River Cleanup on May 17th. And we're taking that opportunity to return to the area behind Safeway on Pillar Cedos Creek to continue the work we started last month in cleaning up the homeless encampments there. there. Same protocol, we have Coastside Hope helping us, the homeless outreach team helping us. Larry with Public Works is putting the dumpsters in place. The last cleanup, we picked up over 4,000 pounds of trash. The two dumpsters were overflowing. So we may not have quite as much this time, but we make sure that the people who are there are not disturbed in any way and that they receive all the services from the agencies that are available in our community, which are extensive. So that's from 10:00 until noon. And we realize that the city owns that property, but again, as I mentioned the last time I spoke to you about this, we feel like we're part of the community and we want to help be part of the solution to the situation there. My third item is to thank you for considering a letter of support to the California Coastal Conservancy in support of our request for a grant to construct a segment of the coastal trail on the south side of the Seymour Bridge. We were able to get funding, $246,000 from the Conservancy. San Mateo County Park Department is contributing $104,000 in equipment and labor. The Peninsula Open Space Trust has stepped forward, and the Coastside Land Trust is putting in funds as well. So the whole project is about between $400,000 and $450,000. And that doesn't count the $150,000 we just spent on planning. So it's very expensive, but fortunately, the Conservancy is very supportive of helping get these projects completed. As part of this, this is my fourth item, was that the Seymour Bridge decided it didn't want to participate maybe in the coastal trail and was potentially being eroded away. I spoke with the Peninsula Open Space Trust and the Coastside Land Trust, as well as they have a call into Mo Sharma to discuss taking the water out of the Seymour ditch and using it to reestablish seasonal wetlands on the post property and the Coastside Land Trust property, hopefully thereby eliminating a lot of the water that's causing the erosion. So we're prepared to be part of the solution to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie Hall, please.
I'll try and get this where you can hear me. The main thing I wanted to come to do at the city council meeting on behalf of the American Legion Coastside Post 474 was to thank the mayor and the city council for the proclamation they did for our 80th anniversary, which was April the 20th this year. So the number 474 indicates we were the 474th Legion Post in the United States it was formed. I currently serve as the Finance Officer for the Legion. Wanted to simply say thank you for that. We recognize that it was Easter Sunday, so we delayed our service until 4:00 in the afternoon so we didn't conflict with religious services. And we had an excellent day. We also have a Facebook page. You can check it out. We have lots of pictures on there from our 80th birthday party. We had a very talented young lady that made a cake for us, three-tiered layers with different types of cake on each layer, but had the American Legion logo right on the top layer, and that's on Facebook. On Memorial Day, a couple of other things that you need to know. We will have a formal service at the post. This week, we're taking two young students from Half Moon Bay High School to San Mateo for an orientation meeting for Boys State. And we also, the auxiliary that's part of our organization, has candidates for Girls State. For those of you that don't know what that program is, we send young people to the Capitol, and they actually run state government. It's an exercise that they learn how government works. I recently ran into one of the former candidate's father at the post office and asked how his son was doing. The one that he stands out in my mind was he was a bugler and he used to play taps for us at Memorial Day and all the services that we had, which was kind of nice. But he's down in San Diego State in Santa Barbara, doing just fine, but a nice young man. These kids are high achievers, have grade point averages close to 4.0. They're selected, and they do a nice job representing us. The other thing was, again, just invite everybody to come Memorial Day. We'll have a formal service. We'll be serving food. And if they can't come to our service, the one that's really awesome to attend, and I've attended that one in uniform, is at Golden Gate National Cemetery. The day before, there's a whole crew of Boy Scouts and their parents that decorate every grave with a flag. So that day is pretty impressive. They have a flyover that day. They have full honor guard for the various services, and if you have never seen it, you should go. So that's all I have to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes our public forum. We will move on to the next item on the agenda consent calendar.
I would move for approval of items three through 10.
I'll second, if I may make a comment.
Please.
I just really appreciate the letter that you wrote in support of the grant funding for the trails, and I think that's a great continuation of the work on the coast and continues to make our home a better place. So thank you for that. With that, I'll second.
I have signed it also. So we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So ordered, 4-0. At this time, we will move on to item 11. And let me get to 11 here. I'm sorry, here I got the papers.
Sheriff's thing.
I think we're coming back here. City Manager, interim city manager Stewart, please. I'm not sure who's going to handle this.
I was about to turn it over to Michelle.
Okay, we have Michelle. Thank you, Michelle. And you know what? We forgot to thank Michelle for the great work and the staff has done regarding, and we all missed our Earth Day, and she was so instrumental in doing the great duty of sharing compost and other things, too. So, and Vice Mayor was there.
Yes, it was such a fun day. I didn't think of it as work, so very good, Michelle. You know, compost day, we had over, what, 75 people come?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one.
We gave over, or close to three tons of compost. And we could not have done it without our staff, Siobhan and Carolyn, ordering, giving, putting together giveaways for the children, and it was really nice to see so many people come out and not only load compost for themselves, but help others and spend hours there helping others, and so that was a lot of fun.
I'm sure the city attorney let us have a little waiver there of the agenda, but now we're back to business, but we're sorry, we didn't put that down. So now we're moving on to the agenda item 11, please, Michelle.
Okay. We're here tonight to talk about the Law Enforcement Services Contract Amendment Number June 2011, we entered into an agreement for Law Enforcement Services with the county through June 30th, 2016. Each year, per the agreement, the city amends that agreement to incorporate new rates and additional changes. Also included in that agreement is the contract that includes a clause that issues a credit for unfunded actuarial accrued liabilities paid to CalPERS. The maximum UAAL credit is $361,951, which results in a net contract cost of $2 million. The contract for this year is $2,375,642 for Law Enforcement Services, which is a $50,000 increase from the previous year, overall 2.15% increase. The service sheriff's levels will remain the same. The biggest increases are for salaries this year for deputies and sergeants, record supervisors, community service officer, and the lieutenant salaries. Retirement rates also increased this year, radio costs, and 3% increase in support services. And we recommend that you authorize the city manager to execute Amendment Number Five to the Law Enforcement Services Contract. Are there any questions?
Councilman Patrick?
I, unless there's any of the comments, I would make the resolution to authorize city manager to execute Amendment Number Five to the Law Enforcement Service Contract. And then my personal comment is that I'm really, really happy with what the sheriff's department has done for the city of Half Moon Bay. And Lieutenant, if you could take that back to Sheriff Monks, how much we appreciate that, what he has done for the city and has kept his promises to us, and so I'm very thankful. I need to say that personally because I was very hesitant when this all happened. In fact, I was crushed when we lost our police department, and I'll tell you, the sheriff's department has done an outstanding job.
And I will second that with the comment that our law enforcement services are clearly top caliber, and we are well-served, and I appreciate that as well.
And my comment is that, again, I think we get comments from other cities throughout the Bay Area regarding this contract services we made with our San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. And, you know, as Councilman Patrick stated, it was tough decisions, but let me tell you, again, the professional services we're getting and the job and the visibility of them all here, I think it was a wise decision. And I can only say that, you know, it doesn't cost, it pays. You have to have a service and you have to pay for it, and our responsibility, we've stressed for many times when we're discussing the bridge issues and others, our role as elected officials is for the health and safety of this community. And I think this is another example of health and safety where we are making the right decision to approve this authorization for the city manager to execute the amendment for Law Enforcement Services. So I have a roll call, though, please.
Yes.
Concha McQualter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grayson?
Yes.
Your caller?
Yes, so ordered. Moving on to item 12, please.
Thank you. What we have before you tonight is a question concerning participating with the county in a design and engineering work for reconstruction of the trail along, or not the trail, but protecting Highway One near Surfers Beach. The county has $200,000 that they have money for. Their project is a $400,000 project. They are trying to put together a coalition to pay for the other $200,000 for the design. Once the design work is done, it will become a Caltrans project. Caltrans is going to pay for the construction that is needed for protecting of Highway One. The county has come to Half Moon Bay and asked for $100,000. If we can, they would, of course, accept the full $200,000. Unfortunately for us is that, you know, we have $100,000 available in our revenues from next year, but if we were to use another $100,000, it would have to come out of our reserves that we would have for other, we would probably need for other projects like working on Smithfield or working on the library, or a number of other projects are important to us. As I've shown in the staff report, there's a number of components to this project. I show this on page 69. You know, you have the retaining wall to support the existing embankment that extends approximately 150 feet from the existing drainage outlet to the south. There's a rock slope protection to be placed along the ocean side of the wall to provide energy dissipation and protect the wall from undermining. There's a reconstruction of the paved coastal trail adjacent to the retaining wall. There's a staircase to connect the paved coastal trail to the beach, and then a 10-year monitoring plan that will provide annual geotechnical inspections of the improvements to assess durability of the structure. Staff would recommend, you know, having staff work with the, putting $100,000 into the next year's budget. We'd bring that back when we approve the budget, and that the staff would work with the county to determine the agreement that would need to be made. And we would ask you that you put in the budget and ask us to sign that agreement when we are done. We do have a representative of the Supervisor Horsley's office here tonight that can talk more about the project since they're the ones taking the lead on it from the county's perspective, if you have any questions. I'm here to answer questions, but I would also suggest asking the representative from Horsley's office.
Thank you, and I will have him come forward. Supervisor Horsley and I have talked about this quite a bit here in the last couple of months, and I'm sure his able-bodied staff person can update us on the latest, but, you know, from my perspective, it is a vital link to this whole coast side, and I don't want to lose that link for sure. You think we have problems with Devil's Slide, and we all drive by there many times a day. So, and I know the supervisor had another engagement tonight, but he sure has done an amazing job representing the coast side, so I will let you go ahead and make some comments on behalf of your supervisor.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me to speak here. Also, thank you for hearing this item.
May I have you give your name and title, please?
Yes, my name is Nicholas Calderon. I'm a legislative aide for Supervisor Don Horsley. I'd also like to thank interim city manager Stewart. He's been phenomenal. He came in and picked up the ball on this, and we were able to run together quite fluidly on this, so I want to thank him for that. As he said, though, we have been working with Caltrans for several months now on developing a partnership that would protect, developing a partnership that would develop a project to protect Highway One at Surfers Beach. Part of the project would also include a 400-foot-long segment of the California Coastal Trail, as well as a vertical access staircase linking the trail to the beach. As many people know right now, in order to access the beach, you have to slide down the eroding embankment, which often causes injuries and ruins beach equipment, we'll say, surfboards, other items like that. And so, and as the mayor stated, this segment of the highway is extremely important. I've driven on that segment four times today. So, you know, it's a very popular area. Immediate proximity to it is El Granada's commercial area, Sam's, Beach House, Pillar Point Harbor, Oceana Hotel and Spa. So it's extremely important for us to preserve it, and we're very happy to hear that it's also a priority for you as well. As stated, we have an agreement with Caltrans that if we are to obtain $400,000 to bring the project to construction-ready, they will take care of the rest of the cost, which is estimated just north of $1 million. So we are extremely excited about this project. It's a high priority for Supervisor Horsley, and we appreciate you guys considering this item tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Nicholas. Vice Mayor?
Thanks, Nick, for coming here. You may have been at that meeting several months ago out at the harbor. Sheriff Horsley was there when the Army Corps of Engineers came out. I'm glad the county is picking up the ball on some of this because I was sitting with the county manager, and it was a little disappointing to hear that the Army Corps of Engineers, they have to contribute to helping fix the erosion. And between the two of us, we figured it was going to be at least six years of planning. And although they said they had $5 million that was budgeted, it actually was not allocated. And the disturbing thing in that was that they hadn't even spoken to Caltrans. And Dave Hall and I just looked at each other, it's like, there's got to be another way. And Sheriff Supervisor Horsley was there. You know, the erosion that is happening there is very serious, and, you know, that is an important road that we go up and down, as well as the trail there. So I know we're starting someplace, but this cannot end here, and I think we need to look at other avenues of funding on a state or federal level and push the Army Corps of Engineers for their involvement in this because we're all going to be in a very bad situation if that road continues to fall, or there isn't a plan both short term and long term for that area. So thank you. This is, I look at this as a first step.
And it was my understanding, speaking with the supervisor, we are kind of a little bit in limbo right now. Again, we're a little bit on hold. Is that correct, with the many agencies involved?
For the project to surface beach or the Army Corps of Engineers project?
The total plan in itself, I thought we were just, it's going to be some delays for now.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. We are- We are, we're currently working through some details with Caltrans and the Coastal Commission. We're bringing the Coastal Commission in early on to make sure that we don't have any problems on the backend with this project. So we're, it's not taking off tomorrow, but we are pursuing it aggressively. But yes, there have been some road bumps.
We do projects on the coast, so we understand that completely. I think the main thing is that we're looking at to secure what funding our city could give them, and, you know, we were talking at possibly securing $100,000 in this item here, as I understand it. And they won't be coming and grabbing it next week, because it's a process, again, like we all go through. So I think staff's recommendation is here, it's up to the council?
I'd like to speak.
You're more than welcome to speak, Madam Councilmember.
Okay. I have a real different perspective on this whole issue. Number one, this whole issue was caused by the Army Corps of Engineers when they put the breakwater in, and that's what started all the erosion and the lateral shifting of all the sand down to Pescadero, away from Dunes Beach and from Half Moon Bay. We have constantly been telling the Corps that we are having the erosion problem, and nothing was done. So I was very upset when I saw this come to me, and you can ask the interim city manager that I was not happy about it, and I'll tell you why. Because we are now solid in our funding as far as for city services and city projects. And I just don't want us to be paying for what other agencies should be doing. Number one, the county, the county just passed Measure A for capital projects. To me, this is a capital project that sounds like it's more for their trails and the passage. I can see us participating in part, maybe part of the road kind of a thing, but the trail thing, there's a lot of funding for trails in San Mateo County. And, you know, the county has not applied for some of those fundings and things, so being on the BPAC and on the Trail Committee, I know that for a fact. So I just don't want it, you know, I would begrudgingly give them $100,000, I will not give them two. We have $100,000 left in our reserve. I would really like those money just to stay within our city and the projects that we want to get done. But I understand the retaining wall and all that kind of stuff, but the retaining wall, I'll tell you right now, is not going to help. They need to do something besides just a retaining wall, because the retaining wall is still going to erode, because it's still going to be hitting. I mean, it's just like in Pacifica, those poor houses that went down, you know? So unless you correct Mother Nature, and we screwed Mother Nature when we put in the breakwater, so, you know, no, it was, it's great because it protected the harbor and for the fishermen, but the outcome was, you know, it hurt other parts of the coastline. So that's my two cents, but, yeah, I'm really tight with city money.
It's another Sanguinorian engineer on the council here.
I'm not an engineer, I just.
Come on. Councilman Qualcheck?
Thank you. So Nicholas, thank you for coming tonight. I did have a question for you, and then I have a comment for the council. So can you just give me a little bit of history? Has Caltrans come out and evaluated the roadway and the trail and that area and given its opinion of it?
So Caltrans is monitoring it, and based on documents that we've received, their estimate is that the embankment erodes about between 12 and 18 inches a year, approximately. Now, this year, we've obviously had a very dry year. There's conversations about next year being an El Nino year, so, you know, it's on a year-by-year basis. So they are, they are monitoring it, and they are of the opinion that eventually something will happen there. They are hesitant to put a specific timeline on what they think, other than the fact that they do believe a project at this location, a project of the kind that we're discussing here, would protect the roadway. And building it to Caltrans standards, which right now the conversation is a sheet-pile retaining wall along with rock slope protection to Caltrans standards would provide several decades of protection, and we would hope that within that time, the Army Corps of Engineers would figure out what they're doing, which would provide an additional level of protection there.
Thank you. And just sort of a random question, did Caltrans by chance give it a rating on a 100-point scale? Just rhetorical, rhetorical. It's inside joke, sorry. Then to the council, so I hear what Naomi, the council member Patridge, is saying loud and clear, there is, when we raised extra revenues to Measure J, we made very sure that Half Moon Bay dollars were spent on Half Moon Bay assets. And that's, I think that's really important. And I also am hearing that there may have been, or there may still be, grant monies available for trail projects. I'm assuming this project would not start, there's some delays, would not start Monday, but there'd be some time in there. And I also agree that the $100,000 would be max, but I'd like to tie to that, that comes along with the requirement that the county seek out grant funds for the trail that are available. Does that sound unreasonable or appropriate? And of course, Nicholas, I'll ask you for your reaction, but I'm curious what the council thinks of that, or is that tying the hands and not appropriate in your opinion?
Vice Mayor?
So I see two things here. You've got a retaining wall. It may not be the end-all answer, but it's a start. I think, I'd like to see the county really push Caltrans. We cannot lose that road. That is the last piece of road to the end of the city limits. And again, that's why I want to stress the short-term or the long-term. Does Caltrans own that land? That's a little further inland, so the road would come in a little further, because I don't want to see a situation where they just reroute all traffic down to the existing road that already exists there. So I think we need to be aggressive with this, because the civil engineers, that money is, and they said they're not even sure if it's really their fault, too. I mean, I couldn't have been more disappointed with that meeting months ago. So, you know, I think we have to pursue this aggressively before that road does go down, both short-term and long-term, because we're all going to be in a lot of trouble. That is, a road of commerce, that's just a road that people travel on to get back and forth, and kids and buses and everything. So I don't want this to be like a devil's slide situation. So I'm happy to allocate $100,000 now, because it's not just a trail, it's part of a wall. It's not the end-all to it. And, you know, we can get other trail money somewhere, but it's the start of something to get people to recognize what a problem we have, because you know this is going to be forever for permits.
Thank you. Councilman Qualcheck?
So I think we do not need a motion, right? This is to direct staff to include this in the budget, is that correct? So I'd like to suggest we direct staff to include the $100,000 in the budget, and we encourage the county to seek out grant funds to be used on the trail and that location. Makes sense?
It's a motion?
No.
Direction.
Nicholas, maybe you can answer my question. I was surprised to hear that Caltrans's design is for the retaining wall and the wall of rocks and stuff you said. I was shocked when you said that. Has that been approved by the Coastal Commission? Because they have not approved any of those. They've made people take them out. So I'm surprised if they said okay there.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, through the mayor. So we've had conversations with the Coastal Commission. The design features that Caltrans is referring to is a design feature that we have noticed they use in project areas when the roadway has already failed, and so therefore they have the ability to do projects that may otherwise not be permitted under different circumstances. The Coastal Commission does understand that this is a unique circumstance, and given that it is the, it's a vital roadway and access point for both Half Moon Bay and the midcoast, they are understanding of that, and so they have been willing to have these conversations with us. Nothing has been permitted, and the Coastal Commission hasn't signed off on anything yet, but they are in the process of reviewing a scope of work for a consultant, and they are, they have been very understanding to this point. Like I said, given the, given that this segment is essential to standard living and commerce in this area, they've been extremely supportive in our efforts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think, just to come up with Councilman Qualcheck, I believe that section is in the city limits also. So when we're concerned about funding in the city, and with all respect, that west side of the highway is city limits, all the way to Sam's Chatterhouse.
No, the beach, the thin piece.
I understand, but that, you know, we could debate that. I think we actually, well, we could possibly own part of the harbor also.
I think the.
That's another subject to go into someday.
I mean, the important thing is it's a major access for us, north and south, that, you know, there's, this is an issue that, and I would agree with Councilman Patridge, that, you know, from my time down south, juddies into the ocean stop sand from flowing where it naturally flows. We need to do, I think, what we can to give the Army Corps of Engineers as much time as possible, because having worked through with Army Corps of Engineers, decades is kind of a year to them. They have a different timeframe. So if we can do something that can preserve that and allow the Army Corps to figure out what, how they have caused some issues, and they can fix those, that is in our best interest, because if Highway One goes there, we are going to see that whole double-slide kind of issue happen again, where we're going to have that inability to get traffic north and south. So, you know, I think from that perspective, as a city manager, participating in this, whether it's directly in our city or not, it's an important aspect for our city. And I know that we encompass that area in some fashion, driving down that every day.
Thank you. So I think you understand that we're in agreement to direct staff to move forward with this item there, recommendation. So we will continue the city council meeting into closed session, so we will clear the room, and I'm not sure exactly where we will continue the meeting next door. So we'll ask all the cameras to be put away, and we thank all of you for coming this evening, and thank you staff for your hard work. Well, we started the meeting, but also when we adjourned the meeting this evening, we can adjourn it now, we'll be definitely adjourned in memory of Eddie and Janie. It has to be continued because we're going to closed session. So without a doubt, we are in memory of our family, Eddie and Janie. So the meeting will be continued in.